We made it from the piano.
Yeah.
It's pretty rough.
Yeah.
Well, we wanted to be able to hear you.
Just to legislate here.
Uh, don't you?
Yeah.
I'll let you know when.
I know you have it. But she's answering the phone.
No, okay, okay.
Um, like Patrick.
Sorry, can I call you?
Patrick.
This is nice.
I'm just starting to get started about this.
Yeah.
I'll say, I'll just do what I did. You want to maybe give people a minute to stand up and do that as we receive so they can still hear.
Yeah. I didn't really want to have time.
And these are residents who during comments just want to look inside those decisions. Is that because you're going to read something?
Yeah. How was your date?
Because of break-ins.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see Ken, the office actually flies. But it wasn't thinking.
Okay. I feel like something's crazy guy.
Yeah. I tried, but you're not.
Yeah.
Oh, you're.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, it's been a long meeting.
Good evening and welcome. It's Colorado.
Dr. Brian Weiss.
Here.
Mrs. Maria Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Joshua Benz.
Here.
Mrs. Megan Walsh. Here. Mrs. Julian Dillon. Here.
Okay, we'll start with our housekeeping. Um, this is an in-person meeting of the Beachwood City Superior District Board of Education, and this is not a virtual meeting under Amendment Substitute Host Bill 197. The board will require each attendee of this in-person meeting to wear an appropriate face mask in accordance with the board's prior rules on its face mask policy. There is a link to the face mask policy on our website. The board will also require each attendee of this in-person meeting to follow appropriate social distancing and other safety measures while on school property. For the convenience of our community, this meeting will be livestreamed via YouTube, and the link will be of the livestream is available on the board's website by clicking on the tab for "Our District" and then on the "Board of Education" tab. You'll see a tab in the left-hand margin for video of meetings. The board will accept public comments on agenda items both in-person and electronically at the beginning of the meeting. The board will also accept public remarks in-person or electronically near the end of the meeting. To submit electronic comments or remarks, please use the link located on the "Video of Meetings" page on the district's website. If there is interruption in the livestream of this meeting, the board may suspend this meeting for up to 15 minutes while electronic difficulties are addressed and/or for virtual attendees to attend the meeting in-person. If the technological difficulties cannot be resolved, the board reserves the right to continue with the in-person meeting without livestreaming for the community or being able to accept comments or remarks electronically. Dr. Bian, would you please monitor the livestream of this meeting and let me know immediately if there's any interruption in the livestream?
Yes.
And also please monitor any comments or remarks that are electronically. I'll ask you to read them aloud at the appropriate time throughout the meeting. Thank you. Okay, one more to the housekeeping. I want to go over tonight is board of the instructions on public comments periods. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public participation in deliberations and decisions on the school district matters. At this time, the Board of Education recognizes the importance of conducting orderly and efficient proceedings by its members. The purpose of this bylaw is to assure open and orderly public comment as well as to protect the due process and privacy rights of individuals under the law. Individuals in the audience may participate only within the rules and regulations provided by this bylaw. Member of the public may address the board with comments during two portions of the regular scheduled meeting, regular or special meeting. The first opportunity will be on proposed resolutions on the board agenda. Comments must be limited in scope to the resolution items. The second opportunity occurs at the end of the meeting when we limit the subjects relating to the operation of the school district. The public comment portion of the board meeting will be limited to 15 minutes respectively. At my discretion, I may extend this time. The board will listen to speakers but may choose not to comment, give answers, or expect the administration to give answers at the meeting when comments are made. It is a practice of the board to refer inquiries to the administration who will investigate this matter and report back to the individual or group. Any person wishing to participate during either portion shall, number one, write their name and address on a signing sheet, which is something they look at, but on the signing sheet, which are located in the front of the room on both sides. Speakers on resolution items sign the sheet on the left side of the room, that's your left. Speakers with general comments sign the sheet on the right side of the room. And Dr. Weiss?
Yes. Just, so it would be your left.
Our left?
Your left and right. So on resolution items tonight, that side, on general comments, on this side.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I might have put them on the wrong side.
We just, yeah, at least I know. So, and if you're doing the resolution, please state the resolution number that you wish to comment on, again, if it's a resolution. Limit the comments to three minutes. Be courteous and respectful. Be short and to the point. Address the members of the board. Do not directly address student council representatives at the board table or any other minors in attendance. Refrain from any action which would disrupt the orderly process of the meeting or result in any breach of the peace. Refrain from lewd, vulgar, profane, defamatory, threatening, and plainly offensive speech. This is not protected by the First Amendment and is prohibited in this setting. If necessary, I may limit individuals' comments to the board in an effort to require adherence to these bylaws. The board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. Thank you. And also, if you do decide to speak while this is, while it's mine, I'll have the, oh, please, when you're signing in, please print your name so I can, so it's readable, so I'll be able to read it. And during the time when comments are being taken, there will be sheets out just still if you decide to speak during that, so that you can speak after the initial sign up there. So, okay, are there any additions or changes in the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Move into programs, reports, and presentations.
Sure. Our first presentation is from the PTO. I'm pleased to have a number of their representatives here tonight, and I, she's already taking the stage. I welcome Laura Preston to the stage, and thank you.
Hello.
Thank you. Cheryl Isaacson. And we appreciate you coming back to us with another Beaming Bison presentation.
Hi, hello. Um, thank you, guys. We just wanted to just hype up again. We're so excited to continue this program. We've had, you know, we're trying to do it kind of every other month. Um, and so you're going to see an awesome presentation right now. I think that, as you've noticed from the last time we did Beaming Bison, it truly represents, represents the amazing stuff that's going on in our buildings every day. It highlights so many staff members. I encourage you to not only, once you read, see the winners, I encourage you to go back and look at the whole nomination, because each one is more powerful than the next when you read what our parents and students and colleagues are saying about each other. And I think this month truly highlights the amazing staff members that are doing things above and beyond to celebrate women's history, to celebrate the diversity which is in our schools, to celebrate mental health, to go above and beyond in teaching in times of COVID, in teaching in times where you have hybrid students and you have kids at home and you have kids in person. And we have some new staff members that have really been highlighted this year. Some of them are even long-term subs. And we have some staff members that have worked in our district their entire career. So I think many of you, especially parents, will recognize these people. Certificates will go home, not go home, I'm not talking to kids. Certificates will go to each building, and then Cheryl's also going to present and show people, because the cookies are always exciting, too. Um, they will go home, and then that, each staff member will get to see. I haven't seen the quite the cookies for this month, so.
Awesome.
And if you're wondering why the balance is different, there is a, ooh, I want to see.
Oh, very sweetly, that's beautiful.
It's supposed to be like the cocoons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's pretty.
That's gorgeous. So each, um, each staff member, there'll be educators awards as well as service awards for our certified staff. And, um, if you're noticing somebody's nominated but they're not a winner, it could be because they already won, because we've got a lot of repeaters, or you will notice that some staff, it's a little off balance, like we have more winners at the high school because it's a larger district. Okay? Um, next month, we will be highlighting teacher appreciation, so that's coming down in the place from, in May. And then we'll do one more Beaming Bison at the end of this 2021 school year. So without further ado, we're ready.
Here are the nominees for the Beaming Bison Service Award at Beachwood High School.
I give him and create this video on his own time, so we need to definitely thank Tony for doing that. Um, and I love seeing the reactions of people nodding. Each person comes up, and then you're like, ooh, I can't wait for my child to get that, right? So we're going to keep it going. Very exciting. Thank you, Tony. I'm sure you're watching at home. We appreciate this technical work.
Thank you.
Thank you all for doing it. Thanks for the program, and the recognition is great. And everyone appreciates it. We appreciate seeing you, and I know everyone appreciates the nomination, especially when they put out through the winner. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for recognizing our staff, who we also recognize our excellent staff, so.
Are there, are there an exact number of cookies for the winners?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
I'm positive, yes.
Before, before we go into the next presentation, I just, I didn't want to forget to welcome our city council representatives, June Taylor, Alec Isaacson, and Council President James Pash is here. Always happy to have our city partners here with us. They're welcome. That's probably. Okay, we'll move on to our next presentation.
Thank you. So, Dr. Bian and I wanted to offer the board a brief presentation tonight, as well as the public. The board is faced with a resolution that we are recommending tonight that asks you to approve a guaranteed maximum price for the series of facility projects that are going to be completed this coming summer. As a quick background, we have five exciting and sort of exciting facility projects beginning soon. And over the year, this past year, we have worked with a team of people to help the district carry out these important projects. Number one, our owner's representative, Bill Gallagher, who is here from CT Consultants in the front row. We are, our design professionals are from Stroll Architects and BSHM Architects. Our construction manager that was hired is Green Space Construction. And in addition, over the course of this year, we formed and worked with on multiple occasions stakeholder committees comprised of staff, students, parents, and other members of the community who enjoy and utilize our facilities as appropriate to the project. And we're, you know, we're excited to get started. The, um, the other quick review is on the funding for the, for these projects. It was almost a year ago, actually. It was April of last year. The board voted to provide, my colleague, Michelle Mills, our district treasurer, the authority to borrow $5.6 million at very low interest rates. These funds are borrowed against our permanent improvement fund using a TAN or a tax anticipation notes structure or method. TAN, a TAN does not increase taxes for any Beachwood businesses or residents, and it does not account against our debt limit. So we will utilize, and we typically utilize, permanent improvement funds for capital asset improvements such as projects like these. I'm going to turn things over to Ken to offer a quick summary of the projects that people will see, you know, proverbially shovels going into the ground this summer.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, so some of the things that you guys may think are exciting, I think, okay, good, you know, it's exciting, but there are some things that, like maintenance building, that you guys might not find exciting, but operationally speaking, it's exciting to be able to expand a little bit. But for the first one, we're talking about the natorium. So we're looking to make improvements to the natorium. Um, I'm not going to give you detailed descriptions of everything. People can read about that, but I'm just going to give you an overview for each project. And we have five projects. So the first one is the natorium, and we're, we're going to be putting out a new roof and new siding, so just starting with the exterior envelope. The roof will be a metal roof instead of shingles, so it's going to last longer. And siding, we're going to go with a hardy board. Again, we want this to last a long time. Um, in the, in the pool, uh, inside, we're looking at new deck and new flooring, um, and that'll be throughout the locker rooms. We're going to have improved lighting above the pool as well as above the spectators. Um, we're going to have improved technologies for meats, new timing systems, things like that. In the locker rooms, um, we're going to have new lock, come up with the floor, flooring. We're going to have new lockers, which are composite, so rust, there won't be a rust issue. And if, from the locker rooms, most people are used to going in and they have to go through a locker room. We are going to open that up, so it's a little bit easier, EDA accessibility, and then we're going to have a family changing room instead of having to pick male, female locker rooms. And so, and then the last thing, which is a huge one, is new HVAC, so improved controls, so humidity control. We're going to be able to control it from, you know, our phone or computer when we're not available to be right in the pool in the natorium. And then there's going to be an AC component to it also. So people that are in the stands are as comfortable as possible, given that it is still a natorium and the water temperature dictates a lot. The next one, it's not the best picture I've ever taken, but, uh, but you'll get the idea that we're looking to make some improvements in the parking lot. It was due for some, uh, new asphalt. And typically, we do what's called a milled fill. We just take off a couple inches and replace it with asphalt. But with this, we, we wanted to make some improvements in the flow of traffic. And so we, we've identified some areas where we're going to put a little bit heavier duty asphalt, where the buses drive and park. We want a safer flow of traffic for drop-offs and pickups. And so we're going to separate the buses and the cars. The north lot will be a parent drop-off. South will be for buses, and we'll, we'll share this with the community once it's, you know, a little closer to the start of school next year and showing where, what the flow of traffic will be. We're going to add a, a lane to the exit to Fairmount, so people that are turning left, the people on the right can go right. So we're going to add another lane. And then we're going to have new curbing, and, um, and some islands are going to be reduced, reconfigured, eliminated. Then we go to the softball stadium. So one of the things that we, we have to acknowledge is that our, years ago, we had a softball stadium that was, um, on the north end of what is now the new main stadium. And we moved our softball stadium to where it currently is, but it's not up to the same standards that we expect. It's, uh, the same as the baseball field. And so we are adding new fencing for the backstop, putting in dugouts, new scoreboard, better drainage for the field, new spectator stands, a new press box and sound system. And these are going to be comparable to our, our baseball field. And with this configuration, as we have it, we'll still be able to have a full soccer field, um, starting in the outfield, right field, and going south towards Shaker. So, so we didn't lose a soccer field because of it. And again, something that you're probably not too excited about, but is necessary, is to fix our retaining wall. And so it's going to be a cast in place. We are going to put concrete five feet out from this wall and then fill it in with stone and then put a new sidewalk on top. And it sounds simple, but we are going to extend the pinch point that you see on the corner of the building, five, five, five feet. And so it's going to be a little bit wider sidewalk than we have now. And we will have a little better drainage throughout this, so it, the salt won't affect it as much as it did, um, here. And this, this part, this part of the project, the maintenance building, our GMP is not part of tonight's GMP, but it will be on the April 12th meeting, and that's because we're taking a little more time with the design of it. And we can, we don't, this isn't, uh, based around the school year, so a parking lot, we have to have it done before school starts. The maintenance building, we do that. And so we want to, we want to make sure we have the design we're looking for, so we're taking a little bit extra time, a couple more weeks. And so this will have visitor restrooms in the main stadium, and it will allow staff to park vehicles, work on equipment, and to park vehicles, work on equipment, instead of transferring it to the bus garage for even simple maintenance on equipment.
So back to me, briefly on the timeline, these projects will be started as soon as school lets out in early June. And with the likely exception of the maintenance building, as Ken mentioned, they'll be completed before school begins in mid-August. The maintenance building, we'll see, but will likely be completed in early fall. We collaborated with the City of Beachwood, the Rec Department, to make sure that we have found a way to run the camps, the summer camps for the Rec Department safely, both at the high school and the middle school, in the midst of some of these outdoor projects. It won't be a problem at all. They were very easy to work with and very accommodating for shifting, you know, an entrance here or there. And so those will run. And as Dr. Bian said, I think we're excited about all the projects. I'm sure some people, softball players are very excited about the softball. I know our swim families, you know, can't wait. They wanted this yesterday plus 10 years. So we're happy that all of this is commencing and are excited about the designs and the improvements that our whole community will benefit from. So with that, are there any questions we can answer from the board?
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the call.
Mr. Gallagher, if you could give me a resolution. That's what I'm here to listen for. Yeah, I can read. So our next section is, we are required before the approval for a school calendar. This one would impact the 2022, sorry, the 2022, 2023 school calendar. We must hold a public hearing on that calendar. It is in the, for those of you who may have seen the board resolution, it is, the proposed calendar is attached, and we welcome any comments from the community about that proposed calendar. For those of you who haven't seen it, there are no radical departures in this calendar from any previous school calendar. But I know some folks who like to look out ahead at when breaks are so they can plan vacations, et cetera, with their family. When this is approved, you'll be able to utilize that again for more than a year out from now.
Any public comments on the calendar? Seeing now, we'll close the public desk.
Sure. I'm just going to grab the sign-in.
Before we go into the public comments on resolution items, are there, Dr. Bian, are there any comments that came in online?
Nothing about resolution items.
Thank you. Public comments on resolution items.
Dr. Weiss, if I could begin, there was a question that last, sorry, two weeks ago at the board meeting about Board Policy 2240. And this question was logged during this public comment section on resolution items. The question was based on a misunderstanding about how the board adopts policy. There's an organization called Miola. They produce template board policy language for actually 509 school districts in the state of Ohio, Beachwood being one. We were, sorry, we review Miola's template policies, and we make alterations as appropriate to our district. Then we bring them to our board hope. Now, Miola takes our approved language, once it's done, and they electronically house that, those finalized board policies, so members of the public, administrators, district employees can all access and search board policies very easily. So Miola sent us revised language for Policy 2240, the controversial issues policy, and it included a new option for selection that is not in our current policy. We believe that this new language would unintentionally encourage teachers to offer their opinions in class more often, as long as they provided the disclaimer that this was just their opinion. That is not what we want to encourage in our schools. So current board policy, which we are maintaining by rejecting this new suggestion, already does an excellent job of defining the role of the teacher when it comes to controversial issues. And so if I may just read a portion of Policy 2240, the premise of that policy is the following. The board will permit the introduction and proper educational use of controversial issues, provided that their use in the instructional program is related to the instructional goals of the course of study and the level of maturity of the students, that it does not tend to indoctrinate or persuade students to a particular point of view, and that it encourages open-mindedness and is conducted in a spirit of scholarly inquiry. We have been diligent, especially in this past year, to instruct teachers to avoid offering their own opinions, but rather to present multiple perspectives, to encourage students to offer their own, well-researched, well-stated opinions, and to ensure balance in their classrooms. And we trust our teachers to handle this professionally. And so I thank you just for allowing me some time to provide some clarification on 2240. And hopefully that was responsive to the concerns raised at the last meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so the resolution items come out, they've been done online. First caller, Michael Bolstein from Beachwood.
Good evening, President Weiss, members of the Honorable Members of the Division of Education, Superintendent Hardest, thank you for the opportunity for me to speak today. Do you want my name and my address or?
We have it on here now for those five. Thank you.
I'm a parent, a Beachwood resident, a parent of three graduates, Beachwood High School who went through the system. I'm also State of Ohio Director and General Counsel for Proclaiming Justice to the Nations. And I've been asked by the Parents Group to discuss with you these resolution changes, including 2240. And if I may, since Superintendent Hardest raised the issue about 2240, I have a question to be read part of it, and I understand that, but it goes on. And we are to eliminate the discussion of any issue. A teacher may express a personal opinion but shall identify it as such and must not express an opinion for the purpose of persuading state students to his or her point of view. That's later down. And it's proposed that that be eliminated. Is that still the case? Would that be eliminated?
So you have three minutes, and I don't want to take up the time from that. What you are, but just quickly, what you view as eliminated is not in policy right now.
Oh, all right.
If you look at current board policy 2240, I have a feeling that a lot of, maybe a lot of confusion about this would be resolved.
Okay, thank you. Parents are concerned when looking at all of these proposed amendments, and there are a lot of them in there. Some of them are very technical, procurement of federal grants and funds, accounting system, video surveillance, there are numerous. And the parents, it takes them a lot of time to get together and decide what they're concerned about and finally decide to look into it. The problem is, we're on the third reading of this today. And it could come to a vote today, this evening, I assume. Okay. The parents have been seeking advice from counsel, from accountants, from real estate people to try to figure out what this is all about because they don't understand it and they're very concerned about it. And I'm here to propose on their behalf a continuance of the third reading and the vote until the first meeting in May, because it's very technical. I'm sure you've had the benefit of talking to experts about this, about your own proposals, and they would like a chance to do the same. They don't have the resources that the board has. They don't have any money, but they have pro bono consultants such as I am tonight. And I would like to propose that the board vote on such a continuance tonight, and the parents would really appreciate it. When it comes to the specifics of the resolution, I'm sure there's some people who are going to discuss that later than I am, but that's my purpose here tonight. My thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Wolf. That's okay. No, that's fine. Just a quick, just so you know, your points you brought up, we knew that we needed three readings, and it's over at least a six-week period, so there is, you know, ample time for the public or anyone to look through our policies and look over, you know. I'm sorry that your group wasn't able to get the information, but just also so you know, we do look, and if comments do come up later, with something that you have points on, we do look at it, we do listen to the comments, and this can always be brought up for three more readings if it's something that needs to be adjusted. So, I mean, it can be, it can be brought up at a later date, but the process is, the way we do it on all of our resolutions, so that's why it's something that we'll look through.
And I have a technical question. Assuming these passed tonight, and the Parents Group does its work and they decide they want to revisit it, do they need to get a board member to introduce that, or can they just, can you just take it up if they request it?
You can email, call any of us or administration, and we will take it up and review it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay. Betsy Salzberg from Pepperdick.
Thank you. I'm here again at the request of several parents in your school districts.
Mrs. Salzberg, I am so sorry to interrupt you, but if you would keep your face shield on, I believe that's what you.
I can't hear where that's coming from.
I apologize, it's coming from me. We're just asking that you keep your face shield on.
That's okay, and I shall. I just want you to have the policy that says that it's illegal to ask anyone here to wear a face shield anywhere.
Thank you.
And I have to, thank you. John, would you let me know when I'm close to three minutes so I can wrap it up? Thank you. I'm here at the behest of several parents who are here tonight as well as watching online. They tell me the amendments you're making in the board policy impacts them, and they don't have a voice, and they want a voice. Several of them say they're not here because they fear talking to you in person, Dr. Hardest. I mentioned this to you two weeks ago. They weren't here because they were afraid of you with regard to critical race theory they can talk in their schools. I advise them that they needn't be afraid of people who work for them, people who earn salaries in the range of $165,000. You people are paying this man his salary. Don't be afraid. Stand up. I'm a child advocate for 30-plus years. I don't live in Beachwood. I don't have children in Beachwood, but I care about children. And I have read summaries of each one of you online. You claim you wanted to be board members for two reasons. You wanted transparency, and you wanted diversity. There's no transparency here. And as I mentioned two weeks ago, there's no diversity.
I just want to interrupt you for one second. This portion is for resolution items.
I'll get to the first item. The first item is under transient records. Parents are concerned with the definition of certain forms of electronic communications that have limited administrative value. Value to whom? To you? What if they have value to these people sitting here watching online? They want to save in that definition. Other limited-purpose documents that serve to convey information of temporary importance. Who determines what is temporary importance? You or the taxpayers here and online? Video recordings of in-person board meetings? Hmm, I wonder, was it serendipitous that you decided before the March 8 meeting where I first spoke that you were no longer going to keep video recordings online for more than 30 days? Taxpayers want to know. They want to have these board meetings archived, just as they were before March 8. We want to know why. As a businesswoman, I can tell you something, unless it's going to save the revenue, save revenue for the school district, then there's no reason to take these down. That's what I do in business. If someone's going to save me money, I'll do it. If it's not, I don't. Why is it any different for a school district? Thank you. I was going to cover some of the other controversial issues. There are so many, so many, so many that have to do with the education of critical race theory in public school districts. It's wrong. It's wrong. Well, number three, it's wrong that your parents don't buy it.
Your three minutes, your three minutes is up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen and old Michael Caputo, both names are on here of Beachwood.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I realize there's some policy changes coming up for a vote. And I apologize that the pandemic and the Zoom meetings have actually thrown many of us off of our rhythm a little bit, and we're already on the third reading. But there are quite a bit of changes, and there are many concerns out there. We'd just like to be a little bit more involved and go through them, and we do have some concerns. My kind request is that you grant us a little bit more time to go through it, so that we have time to go through and judge any other concerns that we might have. So basically, I'm just saying, I understand there's a lot of changes, and we just want the opportunity to delve into it a little bit deeper over the next few weeks, if that's possible, with your kind consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome your thoughts, we welcome your consideration and participation in the process, but our process is a three-reading process. We do it all in policy. And again, I just want to reemphasize that you won't be shut up, you won't be shut down once the policy is invented. You have some points, you are welcome to make them at any time, and we will definitely listen and reconsider.
As a matter of good faith, I would just request that, and that would really show that there's a cooperative spirit between the board and the sponsors of the school. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Broadbent, 3362 Bell Borre Boulevard. And again, relative to the proposed changes this evening in the policies for Beachwood City Schools, I suggest, listening to the comments made, some of the concerns and many of the concerns that have been expressed to me, Dr. Hardest's response earlier to my questions about 2240, that this may be another example of a self-conflicted wound. I suggest that Beachwood Board of Education could have done a much better job of communicating such a critical issue as monumental changes to the board, excuse me, to the policies and how Beachwood City Schools operate. We have 42 pages of changes, and I'll tell you that it's noteworthy that almost no citizen of Beachwood is aware that they're taking place. I have phone calls, emails, text messages, in-person conversations for three weeks now, and these changes, it is certainly possible that all these highlighted sections maybe amount to nothing, and maybe all of Beachwood is barking up the wrong tree. Maybe they're all innocuous. But right now, my feeling, my firm belief, is that the overwhelming majority of the citizens of Beachwood don't feel that way, because they don't understand this. So the idea that even though there's a pandemic, and even though people are locked in their homes, and even though the world is upside down, that you're going to stick with the three strikes, you're out, this is our policy, and we're going to stick with it, I think, is moot and should be avoided, given the circumstances. I want to tell you, I'm going to keep me a prize of three minutes, please. At a high level, we have policy changes affecting procurement, federal grants, accounting system structures, video surveillance and electronic monitoring, the video surveillance and electronic monitoring, the retention of records therefrom. We have, um, a complete redo of wellness communications with parents. According to what we're interpreting, Dr. Hardest, I would be delighted to have a dialogue with the community that addresses these, and if it is innocuous, that gives you guys a terrific opportunity to communicate with the city of Beechwood and say, hey, I understand your concern, but here's why and here's where you're wrong, and you've missed something. But right now, the understanding is that, uh, for instance, the superintendent is removed from all responsibility of communicating with parents regarding wellness, food, nutrition, and exercise. It's my understanding, belief that that has been part of communication in the past. I have copies that I'll hand to you guys. Last time I was here, there was some, uh, confusion about 20240. This is a paper copy, if you guys can pass these out, of our understanding of proposed policy changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And once again, I just want to remind you, um, again, that this was on the agenda three times. So it's not like we just presented it tonight and are pushing it through. It was on the agenda three times, and the public has had more than ample opportunity to read the policies, just as we have, and ask any questions. And again, even though it is going to be on the agenda tonight, it will not, it is not, it's not a closed subject. We are always open for this, for further discussion, explanation to you, and, and listening to you also. So again, I just want that explanation, I want that understood, that we're not closing down the, the public comment on any of our items, and this is a, this has been given plenty of opportunity for the public to, to see what, uh, what is coming with changes or on the agenda. Anyway, um, are there any other, any other comments coming in for, on the sheets or whatever?
Doctor Beon, any online, any online about resolution items?
No, okay.
Mr. President, can I just ask a brief informational question?
Go ahead.
Okay, I don't think I need to come up.
No, no, just if it's-
It seems to me, I'm used to testifying in the General Assembly and Committees of the House, the Senate, and the State Board of Education. And when you have proposed changes in any kind of legislation, the new material is put in there, the stuff that's being eliminated is crossed out. Now, I'm thinking that maybe what I have been looking at was something that came from the publisher, and some of their stuff crossed out, and not the actual resolutions that you guys, excuse me, that the school board was proposing the changes to. Um, and there may have been a disconnect, disconnect between, um, the citizens and the board about exactly what the board was proposing, as opposed to what the publisher is proposing. I used to be an assistant law director, and I've seen what the publishers do.
And we'll be happy to go over the process, and teach us how it was with you, and go over that and see if there's something that could be, that it is, that can be improved on, so we'll be happy to talk to you about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move into routine items.
Resolution 116 is a resolution to approve the routine matters of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Call her, please.
Mrs. Delong? Aye. Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
Personal resolutions.
Resolution 117 is to employ federal grant tutors for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Call her, please.
Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
Resolution 118 is to approve the mandatory coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
Call her, please.
Sorry. He's system, he's, we'll do it, thank you.
Charlie, Dr. Weiss, I have a question. Is there a mobile version of this that the public can see on their phone of the resolution?
Other, is there?
I honestly don't know if it's on phones, I've never tried that, I've always looked on a computer, so-
Okay.
Uh, we can find out, I don't know if email can, mobile version of, or doc.
Uh, there's a, there's a, uh, link, but there's not a file.
Is it through the school website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Who seconded the motion, sorry, Mike Joplin, that's what I have, and I'm sure, thank you. Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
Resolution 119 is to non-renew winter contracts for service or athletics for the 2020-2021 school year. And as I always note at the end of every athletic season, this is a routine matter that, uh, that makes clear the end of a contract for service, and, um, and it offers, uh, those who have those contracts, clear understanding that they don't have a promise of continued employment. It is in no way, uh, a, um, a valid judgment on their, on their coaching. And if you look at the list, you'll see many people have coached for us year in, year out, and often multiple seasons.
So moved. Second.
Call her, please.
Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
Policy and program resolutions.
Resolution 120 is to approve the third and final reading of the board policies listed here.
So moved. Second.
Call her, please.
Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
Resolution 121 is to approve the third and final reading of revised board policy 1101.
So moved. Second.
I'm having trouble saving, sorry.
Or docs is lighter a little bit.
Sorry. Mrs. Walsh?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's make that, okay. Okay, Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
Business resolutions.
Resolution 122 is to approve the guaranteed maximum price for Part II of the Beechwood High School project.
So moved. Second.
We, we've asked them before, or docs, those are updates Monday evenings, um, so it's just lighting. I, I see it, it's, it's copied up.
Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
And just so you know, we are excited about these, even retaining laws also.
Especially the parking lot.
I think we're all excited about it. Okay.
Resolution 120. Should I wait, Michelle?
Yes, the screen.
Sure, sure, I'll watch your screen.
You won't pull up the resolution.
All right, resolution 123 is to approve an agreement with Tom Doc.
So moved. Second.
Call her, please.
Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
It's just slow, it's a little bit.
Resolution 124 is to approve a primary service agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 school years.
Got it.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Call her, please.
Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay. Resolution 125 is to approve an agreement with A+ Learning and Development Centers, LLC, for the Joseph and Florence Mandell Jewish Day School, and this is for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second. The last resolution, so apparently that's not, there we go.
There it goes.
Call her, please. Don't call me, yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Delong?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Mintz?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay. Take a breath now, so, a little bit of heart-
Reports. Dr. Hardest. Sure, I have been incredibly pleased to see that all Ohioans age 16 and older will become eligible to be vaccinated, uh, after March 29th. And, uh, if vaccine supplies are sufficient, this will obviously be a huge step forward towards returning to normalcy. Furthermore, uh, there are reports that, at the current pace of research trials and vaccinations, that possibly more than 90% of Americans, and this includes children, uh, will have the opportunity to receive at least one vaccine dose by August. So with this knowledge, uh, we are making our initial plans for a full return to school for children in the fall. We are pacing our staffing levels, our school schedules, with the new three-foot distancing requirements in mind, and hopeful to, um, be able at some point during next school year to either loosen that, those requirements further. We have the idea of, um, of retaining our masking requirements and disinfecting protocols uh, in order to safely get to the point where the virus is under control, and we can breathe more easily, literally. Uh, in the coming weeks, administrators will be brainstorming ideas with our building staff, uh, with the, with the full return to school in mind. We will solicit additional feedback from our parents and our students. We are going to approach this as an opportunity, uh, to make shifts in what we do and how we do it, uh, in order to improve learning and as well as our support for students and their families. I don't envision radical changes, uh, but we have received a lot of feedback throughout this school year about some of the positive outcomes of how we've handled school during the pandemic. And we want to make sure that we replicate some of those things moving forward into next year. So we're looking at ways to build strong classroom cultures, strong relationships, uh, with, between our students and families and their teachers. We're looking at ways to reduce stress on our staff and our students, to help struggling students stay engaged, and overall, uh, to improve the mental wellness of all of us. Um, and as we get through a very difficult time in our history, for every single person attending Beechwood Schools and their families. Uh, so, uh, this is, this is exciting, and, um, normally planning for next year is always, always has kind of a, a bit of excitement to it. Um, I can't tell you how much, uh, how, how increased that is this year, with the prospect of next year looking very different than this year. Secondly, I want to plug a really terrific program that is open to our community online tomorrow night, our middle school student council, with the assistance of their advisors, J.C. Link and Garth Coleman. They have arranged a program with an amazing Beechwood graduate, Swati Srinivasan. The program is open to all. It starts at 7:00 PM tomorrow evening, online. Uh, we're going to learn about Swati's journey to and through Harvard, and now, um, being named a Rhodes Scholar, uh, where that journey takes her to, um, to Oxford. Uh, attendees will have the opportunity to interact with Swati, to ask her questions, and I'm really thankful to our middle school students for arranging this, and I'm very looking forward to tomorrow night's program with her. I hope a lot of the community join. That's my update. Thank you.
Thank you. The Federation of Teachers, have a-
Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Student Council President.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Metzger, and honored to serve as the student body president of Beechwood High School. On behalf of the Executive Board of Student Council, we once again remain grateful for the opportunity to present our working agenda to the community. Over the last two weeks, significant progress has been made in class meetings and with the senior class. The class of 2021 also looks forward to their after prom and graduation, as well as the community-wide car parade. Another working point that has become increasingly important to the student council is our committee structure. All five members of the executive board chair five standing committees. Spirit, dance, mental health, civic, service and civic engagement, and identity inclusion and intersectionality. While all of these cohorts are dedicated and committed to offering all core grades opportunities to engage with a larger entity of our school, they were also created with the intention of offering a safe space to discuss pressing issues at hand. Recently, we had an assembly that brought to our attention our emotional well-being and how as students, we can conduct introspection and make sure we are balanced individuals, whether it be between sports, academics, or social activity. The Identity, Inclusion, and Intersectionality Committee plans to host a series of virtual meetings open to all students of all grade levels this semester that extend the conversation about mental health and its intersection with the experiences of students who are descendants of different geographical populations and social statuses across the world. Lastly, we have faith that respect will be shown towards the student council representatives who attend board meetings in the future, duly noted following the last meeting. I am humbled to be a part of a team of individuals who compose the student council and our student body and, as we offer voices to all of our students in person or at home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members. I would just like to acknowledge again, uh, because Mel's for, uh, recently refinancing some of the debt for the schools, and again, being diligent, watching the rates, and watching it. She was able to find three finances, and Michelle was going to pick up spot and ask you, you know, what part of the refinancing and share of the community, how much this has got saved, that's fair.
We refinanced the, um, long portion of our 2010 debt, um, for the high school project. Um, and we received an interest rate of a little over 1.03%, oh, 1.03%. And we're going to save over a million three in interest for, uh, the, the long-term portion of our bonds. And we also reduced the amount of principal outstanding, so it was a really great deal and a really, uh, great experience for the school, because we were able to maintain our AAA rating. We're one of four in the state of Ohio with public schools with a AAA rating. And, um, it's based on, um, some, uh, growth indicators, our school's actually growing. It's based on the support of our community, strong finances, they really want their fund balance policy, and for the, um, our board members and, um, longstanding administrative.
Thank you. Yes, for everything for your diligence and for, for doing that for us, on behalf of the board and the entire community, for saving this community of 1.3 million dollars, uh, which has, has been done as a transition to that before in our years, so, you know, thank you for, for doing that for us and watching, watching the community's, uh, dollars. So thank you for putting in the, um- Okay, um, the other board members? Okay. Now we'll move into public comments. We'll start with online comments, and then depending on the sheet, we'll go into-
We have nine.
Nine?
Yes.
Okay.
So Sarah Schwartz from Beechwood. Good evening, my name is Sarah Schwartz. I am a Beechwood Schools parent. After hearing the mandatory unstoppable program had raised some controversy, I decided to give it a listen for myself, and I could not have been more shocked that anyone would have an issue with it. Supporting our children's mental health, building community as we teach compassion for those who may look or live differently from us, these are essential efforts anytime, but especially in the times in which we find ourselves. To say that our young people are particularly isolated and vulnerable just now is a huge understatement. In a new study by the nonprofit Fair Health, investigators combed through a database of 32 billion U.S. health insurance claims, focusing on the 2 billion or so from 2019 to 2020, to calculate the numbers filed for health services in the pediatric age group, which they define as ages 0 through 22. These researchers focused particularly on the emotionally turbulent years from 13 to 18.
18, and to a somewhat lesser extent on the claims filed by those ages 19 to 22. In both groups, they found sharp spikes from pre-pandemic 2019 to 2020 in a range of psychological conditions, including major depression, generalized anxiety disorder, adjustment disorder, self-harm, substance abuse, overdoses, OCD, ADHD, and TIC disorders. Unfortunately, my family has been impacted forever by one such individual who did not receive the help he needed. On February 14, 2018, we lost an incredibly loved member of our family at the Parkland massacre. Alex Schochter was just 14 years old and sitting in his English class when he was murdered. Since that horrible day, I have thought about, thought a lot about not just the kind of person who would do that, but how someone gets to that point. I can only conclude that the murderer was a monster, but a monster of our own creation. He walked our halls, went through our schools, slipped through the cracks in our system. It is the community's responsibility to look out and support every last child in our schools. I'm very grateful we live in Beachwood and that our superintendent and school board realize how important these lessons are and make them a mandatory part of our curriculum. I do honestly feel that this will help ensure that the cracks in Beachwood remain too small for any one child to fall into. Please know that you have the devoted support of the majority of parents, even if they don't participate in these meetings. Personally speaking, we chose Beachwood in part due to its schools and as such have trusted Beachwood with our most precious possession, our child. My husband and I have every faith that you are taking great care of her to help her grow into her very best self. Please do not change a thing. The next one is by Laurel Hoffman of Beachwood. My husband and I chose Beachwood as the community where we wanted to live and raise our two sons. At home, we endeavor to teach our boys about diversity, inclusion, equity, awareness, emotional well-being, resilience, and so many other essential traits that are integral to thrive in a global connected society. I am proud that Beachwood City Schools, its leaders and teachers both uphold and promote these values as well. Thank you for your efforts. I wholeheartedly support the work you are doing and the quality education you provide for my children and look forward to this important part of their education continuing throughout their Beachwood experience. And Gotti Wollek from Beachwood. I fully support the district in providing training on racism, the effects of using language on people, and trauma. I think that it's important to bring to the attention of the public members the content of such trainings and receive public comments. This might not avoid debate on it, but at least increase channels of communication in our community. If such an effort was made, then I apologize to have missed it. It may be that many of the kids, and hopefully not all, have suffered trauma themselves in their lives. Knowing about the different heritage of themselves and of others around them helps understanding each other. Ignoring historical events is not good. At the same time, it is important to teach how to overcome history rather than sticking to the past and making it an issue, the issue. For example, as a Jewish person, I am obviously well aware of the Holocaust and my family have been affected, but at the same time, I am not looking to blame anyone that I meet today in the past. Jen Monahan, Beachwood. Thank you for presenting Unstoppable to students at BMS and VHS. I watched it and the messages of self-esteem, self-care, positivity, stability, and strength in diversity are wonderful ideas for students to hear. We are proud to live in this school district and grateful to have an engaged superintendent whom we trust with curriculum decisions. We cannot imagine why anyone would take issue with this assembly and also appreciate the school board, faculty, and staff. Melissa Arbuckle, Beachwood.
Greetings. I am submitting a statement to express my gratitude and support for our school's focus on important issues such as mental health, individuality, social skills, and simply kindness. I have two children in the Beachwood system. My younger daughter is in pre-K at Fairmount, and my older daughter is in first grade at Brighton. While my experience with the school system has been brief and a majority of it with the preschool, I have been nothing but impressed. My older daughter started attending Fairmount at age three, and I quickly saw a vast difference from the several preschools she had attended previously. Not only was there a higher level of academics even at age three, but there was a clear focus on social emotional learning. This was something that was new to my husband and me, and we have learned and continue to learn alongside our children. After hearing some skepticism about the recent Unstoppable presentation, I took the time to watch it and came out feeling two things, inspired and confused. Inspired because even adults could benefit and learn something new from the content of this presentation. I suggest in the future distributing presentations like this in advance so that parents can be prepared for the questions that may come home and so that we can continue these discussions at home. As far as confusion, I'm left wondering how could anyone take issue with the content presented? I took away several themes, including knowing your self-worth, understanding mental health, and moving past the stigma surrounding mental illness, understanding trauma and the places it can originate, making a plan for your support system to help you as needed, and celebrating individuality. Both these themes are valuable to each and every individual and are essential for a community to thrive. I grew up in Geoga County, which is essentially a homogeneous population. At times felt out of place being one of a handful of Jewish kids. However, when I attended a religious school, I felt out of place being one of the only kids not from the Beachwood Shaker area. This life experience is part of the reason my husband and I ended up in Beachwood. The diversity and high level of academics are reasons to take great pride in our schools and our neighborhood. I have never felt a greater sense of community than I have living in Beachwood, and I hope to be able to partner with the schools to continue and develop our children into individuals who know how to look out for themselves and others, no matter who they are.
Karen White from Beachwood. I wanted to write a comment of support to our school board and administration as a parent and a licensed clinical psychologist. My household is in full support of Beachwood's commitment to diversity and recent programming in the schools. This is the exact reason we moved to Beachwood. I commend the school board's incorporation of this curriculum and commitment to having the difficult and enriching discussions. It should absolutely be part of our dialogue in our homes, schools, and community. Only then will we move towards better and better and teach our children the true value and importance of diversity and inclusion in our changing world. These matters are not to be swept under the rug or ignored. That is how implicit racism festers and trauma occurs. I am appalled there is a group of neighbors in the community who want this kept out of schools. That is a travesty, and I want to provide my support publicly. Thank you for your service and the willingness to persevere for what is right. And we have Yin May Lim from Beachwood. I watched the recording of the recent Unstoppable Assembly, and I would like to say that I thought it was done in a thoughtful and engaging manner. I hope that those who spoke up at the last meeting now have a chance to watch it and come to the same conclusion. I consider my children lucky to be taught about the importance of good mental health in our schools. I am an immigrant of Chinese descent who grew up in Malaysia, a predominantly Muslim country where speaking about mental health problems is taboo and where discrimination against minorities is not only sanctioned but enforced by law. Many Malaysians believe it is better to ignore the racial issue altogether. Put your head down, work hard, and you will surely succeed on your merits. I myself have such a belief, so I sympathize with the individuals who spoke at the last meeting that espouse in that point of view. But ignoring racism by choosing to be colorblind is not an effective strategy for achieving equity. It is true that some individuals will succeed despite the odds, either by God-given talent or extraordinary effort and perseverance. Others will get through by sheer dumb luck, but it won't change the fact that the system is broken. Needless to say, the system is not going to fix itself. These discussions are not only timely but necessary in light of last week's mass shooting in Atlanta. While this may not turn out to be a hate crime, the shooter is almost certainly mentally disturbed. Thank you, Dr. Hardest, Mrs. Brundert, Mr. Houchens, and the school board for bringing the Unstoppable Program to Beachwood. In these times of increasing political division and the heated rhetoric fueled by social media echo chambers, I like the suggestion from the last board meeting that we find ways as a community to speak to each other in person. I would like to see the school board be even more of a leader in facilitating such discussions. I'm sure we'll find that we have more in common than that. Finally, I implore anyone who speaks at these board meetings to treat everyone fairly and kindly. As someone mentioned in the last meeting, kindness is a scarce commodity these days. Let's remember to be kind. Thank you. Brooks Burke of Beachwood. In hearing that there were objections at the previous board meeting to a school presentation by Charday Hollins, I went to affirm the decision to have her speak on topics pertaining to mental health and trauma. We asked our daughter what she remembered from the presentation. She said that "I am awesome." This response affirmed for us that Charday Hollins was effective in seeking to boost the spirits and the esteem of children developing their mental health and resiliency for love. The next one is from Nerissa Tob of Pepper Pike, and she's a teacher. Thank you to the board and school district for your leadership and commitment to our students. This has been an incredibly challenging year, and I do not envy all of the decisions you have to make. Thank you for doing all that you can to support the schools. And we just had one more come in. Viora Pearlman from Beachwood. Please share the data which shows that the exact diversity program you chose is beneficial. Just because it sounds like a good idea does not mean that it is. Even the dear anti-drug program by police has, in a well-designed study, shown exactly the opposite effect intended. Let's make sure our kids are subjected to scientifically investigated programs. And that's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah. Oh, my camera.
Okay, thank you. We have, as I said at the beginning of the meeting in the policy, we do reserve judgment to extend the time period, and we will extend it, especially since we have so many online statements that we have 12 comments that I see here. And I just ask, and just so everyone knows, we were keeping time even on the online ones took three minutes, so we just asked you to keep to your three minutes. So I probably wasted a minute and a half, but so we'll start again. Shayna Wallenstein of Beachwood.
Good evening. My name is Shayna Wallenstein. My husband Jason and I chose the Beachwood community in large part because of this school district. I'm here tonight to stand in support of the schools, the administration, and our school board. We live in a tumultuous time. Even prior to the havoc that COVID has brought, our global community was fraying. I used to think that Beachwood was immune to the trouble outside of our city boundaries, but in reality, we face many of the same challenges we see elsewhere. I am grateful that our school district is responsive to our communities and particularly our children's needs. For many of us, these are not difficult conversations. They're extensions of the ones we have in our homes, with our partners, and our children on a regular basis. But I recognize that not every family knows how to start or continue these conversations. And I'm grateful that our schools are there to foster and support our kids, developing them into thoughtful, considerate, and kind global citizens. I know that there are some members of our community who disagree with the curriculum being taught. I am here, and you can see others who have joined me tonight, and the numbers you submitted comments online to say thank you. Thank you for continuing to have the courage to do what's right. Thank you for supporting our kids and families as we seek to build the beloved community that Dr. King spoke of. Dr. King also paraphrased the words of noted abolitionist minister Theodore Parker when he said, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." The work being done in the Beachwood schools around educational equity, diversity, social emotional development, and kindness is imperative to continuing to move our community towards that more just society. I firmly believe that this generation of young people will leave our nest and make huge impacts in this world, advocating not only for their own rights, but the rights of others. Thank you, Beachwood Schools, for helping to provide the foundation from which our kids will soar.
Thank you. Sally Fein of Beachwood.
Good evening. My name is Sally Fein. I'm here this evening to express my gratitude to the Beachwood Board of Education, Administration, Faculty, and Staff for everything you have done to see us through this very difficult time. As a parent of a senior and an eighth grader who have been in this district since kindergarten, my husband and I have always known that they were receiving a first-rate education. What resonated this year, however, was how you have managed to push through a seemingly impossible situation with grace and humility. You have consistently communicated with us even if it was to say, "We're not sure how this is going to go." While I would never presume to speak for others, I can tell you that I have found that level of honesty refreshing. Thank you for having the courage to make difficult decisions and for being proactive. As a public high school teacher in a neighboring district, I am well aware of the logistics involved in opening schools during these unparalleled times. While people on the outside looking in may only see it through their personal lens, as educational leaders, you must look at the big picture and how everyone, including your faculty and staff, is impacted. A challenge in the best of times, a Herculean task during a pandemic. In the middle of it all, you remembered that it wasn't just about getting our kids to and from class. You didn't just pay lip service to these unprecedented times taking a toll on our children. You didn't just support a heart and call it a day. I am proud to raise my children in a district where conversations about race and mental health are addressed. I know that when my son leaves for college at the end of the summer, he will leave here with an open heart, an open mind, and a skill set not only to succeed academically, but also socially and emotionally in a new and challenging environment. I am grateful that my daughter has four more years in Beachwood to recover from this dreadful year of fear and isolation. Too much time on TikTok, not enough time with real people. I know that her high school years will offer the soft landing that so many of our kids need coming out of this pandemic because of all the hard work that you do all of the time. Thank you. Thank you for everything you have done, and thank you for everything you continue to do.
Lauren Raff from Beachwood.
Good evening. I didn't prepare any notes. I just need to say thank you for the work that you've done. Thank you to the schools, to the teachers, to everyone who has helped enact all of the important programming that you guys have organized for our students, for our families. And after watching the last board meeting, I felt compelled to come to say that those views are not my views and that there are many parents like me who may not be here tonight, but those that wrote in and spoke before me, their words represent how I feel about our schools and the programming you provide. And I'm also proud to be a Beachwood parent. Thank you.
Caroline Rida, Beachwood.
Good evening, everybody. I want to first thank members of the school board and district leaders for continuing to support and provide high-quality teaching and learning to the students of our community and also my daughter, who's a. students of our community and also my daughter, who's at Brighton. I'm proud of the education my daughter is receiving, and I'm proud to be a partner in that education. I took the time to watch the assembly and read through the elementary slides. I asked my daughter about it, too. The message was clear for both of us. The assembly promoted uniting in and celebrating diversity, not to divide us, but rather to support all learners and their well-being academically, socially, and emotionally. It promoted resilience and being unstoppable, and it promoted developing an awareness and understanding of individuals to form more respectful connections with one another. I'm doing my best to instill those qualities in my daughter at home, and I'm grateful that the schools are helping to encourage them, too. So, thank you.
Jonathan Brogdon of Beechwood.
So, I noticed, uh, some comments, uh, very complimentary of the, uh, program that was held on, uh, March 11th. I noticed that the, uh, the program content and the speakers was changed, that that was a result of, uh, questions from the community that I thank you. Uh, I noticed one of the two speakers was, uh, not included in the program. Um, by my estimation, may have proven to be more controversial, the two. Overwhelmingly, it seemed like the program was very positive. Uh, it did have some elements in it that we were concerned about in our conversations. But I think I would like to encourage the boards to look further, um, and do more. There are great programs out there. Uh, Dr. Carol Swain, for instance, has a program that is designed specifically to address, uh, the issues of, uh, racism, race relations. I think the program, as I've looked into it, there are a number. Uh, 1776 Unites, uh, Dr. Carol Swain's program is, uh, I forgot her name off the top of my head, but there's another young woman who's come out with a complimentary program. But actually, I just decided that I wanted to make a comment about, um, the teacher education, point-made learning, as I've been exposed to it, and teachers continuing education. There's a, an component that's been brought to my attention that I find very alarming, that seems to focus on racial profiling of police officers. I'm a proud, uh, board member of Beechwood 100. I support our first responders, each and every one of them. If there are elements of teacher education that focus on police being branded as bad and reprehensible in our community, I know this is very different than the other topics this evening, but I will say that from the bottom of my heart, I am, uh, very discouraged and very disappointed to hear that there is any animosity that might be brewed on the part of the, uh, school board against police officers. When I heard that, my heart sank, and I wanted to get some clarity around that. If that has proven not to be the case, I look forward to, uh, some feedback from the board. Thank you.
Mr. Brogdon.
Happy to offer that feedback. Again, you're kind of coming with some convoluted theories. You speak at the mic, but you can just call me. So, call me. I'm happy to, um, clarify any misunderstandings for you. Thank you.
Okay. Tiffany Brogdon of Beechwood.
Good evening. So, regarding the assembly we've all been talking about, one thing I'd like to say is I do think it's great that people have lots of different opinions about this. I think that's what's terrific about America. But one of the bottom lines that's really hitting home for a lot of us is that you all, as a board, as an administration, the teachers that we hear, and this assembly, are all calling on one very partisan side, one very partisan interpretation of the issues going on in our country. I'll give you some examples, skipping over a few things because we don't have a lot of time. I really don't think it's appropriate that a presenter in a mandatory assembly for students tells children that if you are descended from someone who experienced a Holocaust, then your DNA has damaged from that person's trauma. I don't think it's appropriate for the presenter to tell our children in Beechwood that if you're descended from someone who was a slave, that you have damaged your DNA from that person's trauma. Now, I know that you all know that that's controversial. You know that. I know that you know that this is not cut and dried, and that people in the community are going to feel differently about it. But that's why stuff like this should not be mandatory. Many parents feel it shouldn't involve taxpayer donors at all, but if, even if a parent believed that that was true, what a personal decision that would have to be, one to tell your precious child, no matter what you do, this thing is in you that's bad and dark and terrible. That has to be a parent's choice to go down that road. It really was way too far. A lot of people are talking about parts of the assembly that almost everyone would agree on. And it's not like people who didn't like the whole thing are attacking every part of it. The issues of mental health, seeking help when you need it, trying to bust out all these ideas about stigma around mental health. All those things are terrific. I mean, I think almost every parent would be, you know, in agreement with those. But when you start getting into that, when you have, you know, a little 12-year-old girl talking about how she's ashamed of her white privilege, that is not the type of thing that every parent in Beechwood agrees with. You do not have license to go that far into one side of an issue. This is something that should not be mandatory. You can see that there are a range of opinions on this in Beechwood. It's just not appropriate for you to be coming down so hard on one side, and it makes people not trust you. I also would like to say that I don't understand why there were three different descriptions of this assembly. The email that went out was about the color of trauma, and the description in that email was almost exclusively about race and activism. And yet, when we came to the school board meeting, we were told by your names and by Dr. Hardest, and I can say, excuse me, sorry, Dr. Hardest, but I feel you were really dismissive and rude talks, because the description you gave of the assembly was not at all like in the color of trauma email. You acted as if we were making it up. There was this character on you. That's inappropriate. But then what actually showed up, the unstoppable, was the third thing altogether, and sort of a combination of the two.
Ms. Brogdon.
I see my time is up, so I'll go. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Taylor of Beechwood.
Hello. Thank you for having me again. Uh, I'm just going to read what I wrote. What is racism? Who are the racists? Those who purposefully do damage to a different ethnic group and claim that they are doing it for their own good. I will give you real examples of racism. Racism is purposefully conducted in the educational system. Why? Because young minds are easily manipulated. For me, I experienced racism in high school in the Cleveland Public School System. It was smooth. I didn't even know it was happening until after I graduated. For example, the east side of Cleveland schools received old books and the equipment from the west side when they were, uh, receiving new books and equipment. So, the east side got the old books from the west side, and the west side got new books and equipment. Okay? That's racism. I just missed the segregation of Cleveland schools, but what I found out about a year ago, many of, uh, the white kids on the west side were bused using school buses while the black kids on the east side took public transportation. The result? White kids went home to their families while several black kids were being kidnapped and killed or molested, either going to or from school in the dark. I experienced racism in college, uh, in Cleveland State. Um, I majored in engineering. They did everything in their power to make sure I didn't graduate. I experienced racism by selected political figures here in this city, but it was miniscule. For example, one of the things that white people do, and I've found this in Beechwood and all over the world, um, and incorporate, when we speak to you, you look around first to see if anybody's looking, and then you speak. That's racist. Overall, though, this, uh, city and school district provided a beautiful experience for me and my family. The students' focus was not on racism. There was harmony, because the schools were so successful. You haven't realized what you're doing is destroying it. None of you experienced black racism. That means you are unqualified to engage in social engineering that convinces all students that black students are oppressed and that the curriculum needs to be revamped in the name of educational equity. Why not just treat all students equally? Why didn't you just ask the past parents and students about their experiences in Beechwood to see what worked and what could have been improved? You didn't have to go the route of the critical race theory. Okay? Adapting a program such as the critical race theory does not create harmony in the school and in the home structure, because it creates an adversarial relationship between parents and their kids.
Ms. Taylor.
I'm almost done. I'm almost, seriously. I'm, I'm, I'm really almost done. It widens the gap between the different racial groups and creates segregation and disrespect. What too many people call racist comments, same people call personality differences. I find your belief in adaption, adoption of the CRT into the curriculum highly problematic. Then there are, there are so many different ways to promote harmony and racial equality. Treat people equally. I guess, I'm an engineer, my husband's an engineer, my kids, doctors and lawyers.
Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry.
Okay, but I'm just saying, that's the Beechwood way.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Don't go the CRT way. It's destructive. You're going to find it out.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Thank you.
Valerie Mason of Beechwood.
Yes.
Todd Mason of Beechwood.
Good evening. My name is Todd Mason, 23605 East Solsby Road. Uh, I wanted to start tonight by actually saying, Dr. Hardest, I appreciate the fact that you did revisit the issue that was brought up at the last school board meeting about the teachers not having, teachers not being, uh, you know, stating that they're operating opinion. It is nice to actually hear feedback from the points that we put out there. We understand that this is not a two-way street. We don't get to ask you questions, you don't get to respond. And I think ultimately, that becomes the number one problem we have here, is we have a communication problem. All right? I'm very happy to see that the color of trauma presentation was not as it was originally described. Why this changed? I'm glad. I don't care. I'm glad this changed from the way it was described. Critical race theory is an issue. Critical race theory does cause division. And if you find a way for us to interact with you all, I think we would find a way that we could actually overcome these issues before they become issues. We've seen a lot of dissension this year. A lot of people coming up and speaking that they're unhappy with a lot of things that are going on with the Beechwood Board. We need a way to communicate with you where you can talk back to us, where we can give you feedback, you can give us responses. Without that, we feel that you're acting autonomously and that we are not communicating. We want to communicate with you. We want you to communicate with us. We need to find a way to do that. Perhaps one school board meeting per month could be in an open forum where we could actually have discussion and debate with each other. I really hope that we can find a way to actually communicate better and actually make changes that we all agree. We are a community. We all have different opinions. We all have different backgrounds. We want those differences celebrated. We want those differences to be overcome in a one unanimous voice. And I think some of the ways that we are going about things, we are not doing that effectively. We need more back and forth from you, and we want to hear it. Otherwise, we just feel you are sitting up here to make a vote, uh, approve things in committee behind closed doors, and we are getting a last-minute ditch effort to get our opinions out to you. Please help us. Please help us to find a way to communicate better as a community with you so that we don't have the dissension that we've had this year. I thank you.
Just a quick comment. I just want to assure you, you know, the board meetings have always been this way on public meetings, that when, that they're during the public comment session, it's just really for comment. It's not more back and forth. But I just want to assure you that the board, the administration, we're always open for discussion. Our phone numbers are published, our emails are published. You're welcome to, whether or not your, your opinions agree with ours, we're willing to listen to you and discuss it with you. Every one of us is willing to do that. So, there is, we do have the forum for back and forth. We're always open to it, and we appreciate it. So, I just want you to know that we're not closing up. Just because this isn't the back and forth doesn't mean that we're not available to you to discuss.
I do appreciate that statement, and we have met with Dr. Hardest and Mr. Hardest privately. But as a community, we need an open forum for discussion. We need an open forum for debate. That is how we would have had these issues, and we do not have that. All right? Only when we all come together and all speak our minds do we understand how diverse we are, and that because we are that diverse, we need to find a compromise that incorporates equity. Thank you.
Nancy Salzberg of Beechwood.
Well, just a few comments. So, the first two, Ms. Sarah Schwartz, I don't know her. She's one of the parents that gave some input online. I'd like her to know, and I have it with me right now, that the original assemblies that were to be conducted were not entitled "Unstoppable." No, not at all. They were entitled "Mandatory Color of Trauma." There is not one time mentioned the words "mental health," not once. I was sitting there combing third year. This was not to be about mental health. It changed, and it mysteriously changed after March 8th, when we, who many who are here today, came and spoke of our disgust over the teaching of critical race theory. Parents who are with me, you'll be happy to know that Florida's Governor Ron DeSantis banned today the teaching of critical race theory in his state. As I was taking my walk today outside the Lake Point building in Beechwood, where there's a beautiful pond, there's a commemorative statuette of Harvey Friedman, who many of you know of, our mayor of long ago. My father happened to be his best friend. My father took Harvey, the mayor of Beechwood, for all his dialysis treatments in the last year of his life, two to three times a week. When I saw this statuette, and I thought of all the words my dad would bring home of Harvey Friedman's vision of Beechwood and his thoughts, he would be rolling in his grave right now to see what's going on in these Beechwood schools. It's disgusting. I'm referring to the color of trauma. And Ms. Worked, by the way, was interestingly dropped off the agenda. She's a self-described activist with the Marxist-led Black Lives Matter group. Black lives do matter, but Black Lives Matter Incorporated is led by a Marxist. I think that's why she was probably dropped off, but we'll never know. We're not allowed to get answers from the group here. Another thought I had to the board, please know, these children's souls are not yours. They belong to these parents. Their minds don't belong to you. You cannot, you don't have the right to inculcate them with critical race theory. And by the way, saving the school's $23 million, I think that's great, but what you're doing is you're selling the souls of your children in this district. So, what kind of trade offer is that? Thank you.
Absolutely. Ms. Salzberg, just a couple things that you said, and I think your rhetoric is quite reckless. The, you use CRT as a catchphrase. It's a political catchphrase for you and part of a larger agenda that I'm aware of across the nation to disrupt civic institutions such as local school board meetings.
That's irresponsible. That is not true.
Everything you already got to tell.
Your mouth, don't talk to me.
And Ms. Salzberg, sorry.
It's Dr. Salzberg.
Dr. Salzberg.
Thanks.
I apologize. The, the, that, that catchphrase may be, you know, may be effective in terms of standing up at this mic and speaking, but I assure you that you won't find that term in our textbooks.
I don't like a different term.
Pardon me. You won't find it in our textbooks, you won't find it in materials distributed by teachers. And I feel as though there's a real distrust on your part in public education, and I feel that a lot of your comments and some of others denigrate the hard work of our teachers day in, day out, and it's insulting to the families in Beechwood and their kids, frankly, if you believe that any of us could indoctrinate them. They're too smart, and what you're saying is just not true.
May I respond? I'm just asking. I've been canceled before. Are you going to allow me to remark?
We had two times, too. Wendy Love, Mary.
You're like laughing.
Or just a minute. I've been over here. Comment online.
Wendy, try to write that red.
It was right by, uh, cat.
Thanks for being kind. These guys are rude.
What your math's got.
I'm going to play it here, I got it tried.
Okay, we have, just so you know, we have four more comments here, and one more online, and we're going to cut it off because unless someone has something on a different subject, we're well over a lot of time, but I want to let those that are here, aside of the speaker, and then one more online, and then we're going to cut it off from there. Wendy Love, Mary, Beechwood.
I am a proud member of the Beechwood Parent Equity and Engagement Committee, and I came here this evening because I heard about some very disturbing comments that had been made at the last board meeting, and I heard some really disturbing comments here tonight as well. A wise seventeen-year-old told me, quote, "Science isn't partisan, but unfortunately some people are less educated about it than others." And I would hope that inclusion isn't partisan either, but some of the comments that I heard at the last meeting and then also this evening are really hurtful, and some things really shouldn't be about a back and forth. The comments are hurtful, I find them hurtful to me, and I can only imagine how hurtful they would be to a transgender student. And I do just want to say that if there are any transgender students listening tonight or watching, please know that the vast majority of your community does not agree that this is something that is up for debate or controversial. We support you. I want to commend the district for diligently working to ensure that all of our students and families are respected and truly included in all that we do. The unstoppable presentation was terrific and much-needed. Thank you for providing it, and please keep providing such supportive presentations to our students and our families. Particularly in this unprecedented time, it is truly vital that our students and families receive this support. I appreciate that the district is truly working to ensure that all of our families have the support that is needed. Thank you.
James Pash, Beechwood.
James Pash, Beechwood City Council President. I just wanted to come here tonight to thank everybody. I wanted to thank the administration, I wanted to thank the board, I wanted to thank Ms. Metz, who's here representing the student body, and I want to thank you for your leadership. Sometimes it's not hard. It's not hard when you have to represent an entire community, and some people will agree with your leadership, and some people will disagree with your leadership, and they'll come and they'll voice that. But I'm here tonight to let you know that the vast majority of this community appreciates you leaning in, leaning into conversations about race, leaning into conversations about equity, about mental health, and embracing diversity as our strength. And I certainly appreciate it. That's why I moved here for the school district. I'm excited that my daughter is starting in this school district in the fall, and I'm excited about the leadership at this school district. So, keep doing what you're doing, and keep representing us the way that you know thus, and, you know, we will reward you at the ballot box for doing so. But I just want to thank you for your leadership during difficult times.
Do you have a clue what it's cray, the David Cray of Beechwood? Know what it is? Can't read the word.
My name is David Quong. I'm in eleventh grade, and I was elected. I was receiving help from the board, took advantage of my peers, and I'd like to speak my boyfriend, have parents speak over us. I'd like to express my support for last week's Mental Health Assembly. It provided valuable insight into how I should deal with my state of mind and survive the difficulties of high school, and said nothing regarding the matters of critical race theory. I'd also like to let everyone know that my soul has been truly not been sold away by this district. However, we do need to expand this conversation from our last meeting to a deeper problem within this school district. I'm tired of having a vocal minority seize control of this conversation around us. First, critical race theory has been widely assumed and examined as understood. Critical race theory is the examination of how laws and social constructs through its intersection with race relations. As race is a key component of the structure of American society, it is important for us in our classrooms to be able to examine everything from multiple perspectives. We cannot look at it from an anti-buddhist standpoint. We cannot tell our students to believe that race is not a barrier to achievement and that they are treated equally in society. If we treat race as such and fail to recognize the implications race brings into our leasing system, our prison complex, our workplaces, and even our homes, we fail to prepare our students for the real world. By over-idealizing our role to our students and sweeping race under the rug, we fail to enrich them with worldview and critical thinking skills that are necessary to survive into adulthood. The efforts to promote equity and inclusion in our school has been a step in the right direction, but there's more to be done. We need to change our curriculum and expand it outside of Eurocentric content. We need to bring more opportunities for students to learn the implications that are included throughout society, legislation, and economy. We need to stop making our country appear as a black and white issue and begin including more of the people of our Latino, Pacific Islander, and Asian-American peoples. As James Baldwin said in his essay, "A Talk to Teachers," you must understand that in the attempt to correct so many generations of bad behavior, I told you, when it is operating not only in the classroom but in society, you'll meet the most fantastic, the most brutal, and the most determined resistance. There's no proof point in pretending this won't. In this time, it is important for us to continue educating ourselves based on the structural racism so criminal in our country while also being able to reflect on ourselves and begin making important changes during anti-buddhist curriculum. Thank you.
Everybody, start from the top of your name.
Lloyd Corman, I believe you sent in an online statement, a comment, so you had your one, but we'll give you a minute or so, just keep it brief.
I do, just have one statement. I'm not very good at speaking publicly from anybody. I just wanted to answer something that Dr. Hardest mentioned about indoctrination. I strongly feel this critical, this presentation, as innocuous as most of it was, really was indoctrination, what probably most people are not aware of sitting in this room is that, yes, all students were, you know, required to attend this. My twelve-year-old daughter with Down Syndrome was required to attend this ridiculous thing. I was able to make enough noise and opt out of it, whatever. Her whole class was required to attend this. What on earth is this school district thinking? Required, requiring forty IQ students to sit through these things and learn phrases that have no idea about, to parrot, to, you know, to confuse them, to, it's ridiculous. And you used my money to do it. That's really what makes me sicker. I want to know how much you spent. How much did you spend on the one that spoke? How much did you spend on the one that didn't speak? You probably still had to pay her, right? I'm done.
Dr. Yance, there's one more online?
Yes. Abdul Mahid Al Tali, Beechwood. I am in full support of schools, the schools' direction. What the schools is undertaking is realistic, and the need, about the needs that our children will face in work-life, great preparation.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion for German.
So moved. Second?
Call her over.
Mrs. Stallone?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Man?
Aye.
Mrs. Spinn?
Aye.
Dr. White?
Aye.
Take you off the clock.